Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmember Bagley.
Here.
Councilmember Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos. Wood. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public invited to be heard. The first person on the list, I guess I don't have the list yet, is that coming? Anyway, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before you begin speaking, and a yellow light comes on when you have one minute left to speak.
Alright, thank you. Howdy, Steve Donellan, 2437 Terranian, Longmont. Mayor, city council members. By far, the most important item with Longmont is fracking. Fracking is dangerous to the general welfare and health of our community and to the economic conditions in Longmont. I'm challenging each and one of you to say yes if we're presented with a lawsuit, which I think may or may not come, either from the oil and gas company and/or Colorado itself. If it comes, I hope it's a seven to nothing vote that you're going to defend the citizens of Longmont, who will back you for this suit. But we have to get our ducks in order. We have to be ready. Are we going to hire an outside counsel? Who's going to be the lead attorney? What witnesses will we present? Let's get going. Let's think about this through. Are we going to have the mayor, Brian Bagley, Brian Schumacher testify? Are we going to have Wes, the EPA guy, testify? Are we going to have perhaps Mr. Prusuchek testify? Put a real face into the situation. Let's get going. Let's prepare for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next up, BJ Ingles.
Hi, I'm BJ Ingles at 2139 Emory Street. I'm here about Comcast. I'm not threatening to blow it up or anything, but I'm thinking about it. They don't have a manager here anymore, so I can't talk to, I can't talk to a manager. I went in, I haven't had cable, real cable, oh, for a half a month in February, all of March and all of April. They said that I hadn't paid my bills, so I sent all the information off. I called them. Do you know you have to call to get any information, an 800 number that's in Seattle, Washington? Yeah. So I keep trying down here, and they finally told me, well, we don't have a manager here anymore. You'll have to call Teresa Ingreely and set up an appointment to go see her. Now, I want, y'all just tell me, they gave me here, they hate to see me coming, Jim Wall, they said Jim worked somehow with Comcast, and I want to know if he's the liaison between the city and Comcast, or if he's just doing Channel 8. Now you know why I miss Gordon. I used to go in to see him all the time before I did this thing in front of the city council, and he'd always say, no, that's wrong, yes, you can do that. But I really would appreciate it if somebody would let me know what I can do, because is there another cable company in Longmont that I don't know about?
Unfortunately, no.
So, I would appreciate it if there was anything, hi Bonnie, hi, anything that anyone, this is new for me. Usually, I know everybody that's around here, so congratulations, y'all. So, if there's anything that anyone can do or let me know, everybody has my phone number, so I really would appreciate it, because they keep telling me I owe them ninety some dollars a month, but I don't get cable TV. So, anytime, anything anyone could do, I'd really appreciate it. I think I give my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person is Pat, and I think it's an H-E-M-G-E.
B-E-L-B, sir.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Pat Pengebeld, and what brought me here tonight.
Is it your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. 1314 Keystone Court, here in Longmont. What brought me here was the fact that a friend of mine showed me an article this morning in the Times Call about camping, about the camping thing at Union, in that it listed seven homeless people. I was one of them, only I did not consider myself homeless, as I have a home on eight wheels, okay, that goes here, there, and everywhere. I have spent the last year living in my RV, because to be quite honest, I can't afford anything in the city of Longmont, Denver, or anything else. When you're on the side of security, you have to learn how to live. So I do what I call no-frills living, with me, my two dogs, and my kitty. Now, I spent last summer at Union. You guys have an absolute gem in that place, that nobody freaking knows about. I learned about it, because I went to a 7-Eleven one day and happened to talk to a really nice guy who had a ranger thing on his shirt, and I said, what are you a ranger for? He says, Union Reservoir. I said, where's that? He said, up the road. I said, how far up the road? And he said, about a mile and a half. And, you see, I'm into astronomy, and where I was living, I was having to compete with car lights and everything else to look at the stars. So, that year, I talked to Mr. Wolford. Mr. Wolford made me contact John out at the park. So, between John and I, we started a thing called, you know, the nightlife at Union, and I would bring in my telescope and show it to people. He didn't know how much interest there would be. Scott from the Times Call came in, wrote an article about my doing this, and, in John's words, we need another story to get people in here. And I have been now doing this program for two years at Union. It has been an absolute success. I have people coming back year after year. I'm in, oh, about twenty different blogs from all over the country. You don't seem to understand, you get people from all over the country in here, Monday through Fridays. You get fishermen, and then when I walk into their site and say, hey, would you like to do something interesting tonight? And they kind of give me a really funny look, and then I say, I have a telescope. Oh, and they're thinking, a little telescope. I pull out my big eight-inch telescope, and all of a sudden, I have forty to fifty people there. And I'm here to volunteer for the position of host at Union Reservoir.
Well, thank you, your time's up.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next up is Jay Marsing.
My name is Jake Marsing. I live at 949 Pass Drive here in beautiful Longmont, Colorado. Mayor Coombs, Mayor Protem Santos, members of council, tonight, I'd like to welcome a new resident to this community. Mr. Dominguez, you are a welcome addition to a city that has spent almost two decades under the direction of the same man. And although I'm incredibly grateful to your predecessor for a remarkable eighteen years of public service, throughout history, change is the only thing that has ever brought progress. I'd like to tell you, if I may, about the history of this community. The Longmonts founders were not unlike yourself. They were adventurers, pioneers, and public servants, traveling across the country with the belief that they were headed to a place of promise, a place nestled beneath the majestic Rocky Mountains, where the air was fresh, the water abundant, and the soil ideal for farming. When they got here, what they found was quite different. When they first traveled, they were railed in the New Chicago, Colorado colony in 1870. They found the air to be arid and thin, and the water to be nearly nonexistent. In fact, one settler described the newly-founded Longmont as a "wasteland." But they were true pioneers. They developed an irrigation system that brought much-needed water to their crops. They discovered new and exciting agricultural techniques that allowed for more abundant production of corn, lettuce, and of course, sugar beet. And within three decades, Longmont was one of the agricultural centers of the state. Now, as, I'm sure you've noticed, Longmont is very different now. We've traded in our plows for microchips, and because of companies like Seagate and IBM, Longmont is now the center of high-tech jobs and industry across the state, but we have never lost that pioneering spirit. We're still innovators, still creative thinkers, who want to offer creative solutions and expect to be heard. Now, you mentioned in a Times Call article that Longmont citizens are incredibly friendly, and we are, until you make a decision we don't like. I'm sure the many concerned anti-fracking activists behind me can tell you all about that. So, as I see, I'm starting to run short of my three minutes. Let me say again, welcome to Longmont, home of innovators and pioneers, farmers and computer technicians. Welcome to Longmont, where the mountains meet the prairie and where technology meets the West. Welcome.
Thank you, Jake. Joe Basman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Mr. City Attorney, and Mr. City Manager. Welcome. Thank you to the friends and citizens of Longmont who have provided city council, city staff, and our community with valuable information about the impacts of oil and gas wells in the urban environment. Thank you, members of city council, for listening to the citizens. You are balancing the citizens' legitimate concerns on one hand, against the threats of the state and the oil corporations on the other. You are drafting regulations that attempt to protect our air, water, health, environment, schools, parks, golf courses, cemeteries, property values, and local economy. We have heard you say that your hands are tied, so you intend to welcome oil and gas wells into our city, and that permits will be accepted beginning in June. But there is another option. Citizens wish to continue working with Longmont City Council and city staff, so please continue to listen. Many of us are willing to work to assemble the voice of the citizens into a clear and concise refrain. We simply do not want oil and gas wells in Longmont. This is a local issue. It is no different than our local right to plan and zone Longmont's development according to our values and our local right to our future. We have an alienable and legal home rule rights to self-determination that derive from the United States Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, and Bill of Rights, the Colorado Constitution, and Longmont's Home Rule Charter. With a unified force of city council leadership and citizen participation, we can make our government work as it was intended, a government of we, the living people, with the will to protect us from, and may I quote a phrase from Longmont City Ordinance Number 09547, to protect us from perils associated with oil and gas development that are contrary to the health, safety, and welfare of present and future citizens, residents, and golfers. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Joe, did you not give us your address?
Yeah, I name in it.
Joe Basman, 3414 Lakeview Circle, where I own the surface drives.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak at this time? Alright, I will close. Public invited to be heard. Next, I have a proclamation designating the National Community Development Week in Longmont, so go ahead and read that. National Community Development Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program has been, has for thirty-eight years provided local governments with resources to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate income, and whereas in Longmont, twenty-eight years of community development block grant funding has had a significant impact on our local economy, not only through the thirteen point one million in grant funding and the one point seven million in program income received and invested in our community, but also through job creation and job retention, and improved local tax base, the physical redevelopment of our infrastructure and housing stock, reinvesting in our neighborhoods, improvement in the lives of our lower-income residents, and development of a strong network of partnership with many nonprofit agencies that provide services to our residents. And whereas, the city of Longmont appreciates the flexibility of the Community Development Block Grant Program that allows our community to identify, prioritize, and resolve our most pressing local problems such as job creation and economic development, neighborhood revitalization, and affordable housing. And whereas, the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2012, has been set aside to reaffirm the significance of the Community Development Block Grant Program in meeting the needs of low and moderate income residents and eliminating or preventing slum and blightiness conditions. Now, therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, mayor by virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2012, as National Community Development Week in Longmont, and I invite all the citizens in the community to join us in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program and the importance it has to our community. Kathy? Do you like to add to that, please?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kathy Feddler, CDBG Coordinator for the city, and as you indicated, this year, National Community Development Week is April 8th through the 14th. One week is set aside to celebrate the successes and contributions of the Community Development Block Grant Program, a federal grant that the city of Longmont receives. The CDBG program, as you mentioned in the proclamation, is a very flexible tool that allows the city to set its own local priorities for the expenditure of the funds, and the city has used them to assist, strengthen, and support our residents, businesses, and neighborhoods. The city of Longmont has received over thirteen million dollars in CDBG funding since it first started receiving direct grants in 1984, and in just the past five years alone, over twenty-five point one million in other public and private funding has been leveraged to support CDBG-funded projects. This year, we'd like to highlight our accessibility programs, including the ongoing CDBG-funded Architectural Barrier Removal Program. This program makes improvements to both owner-occupied and renter-occupied housing, where a family member may have a physical disability or some other physical constraint. The program works with the household to determine their needs and what changes need to be made in their home for them to have full access. This can include exterior or interior ramps, widened doorways, lowered counters, walk-in showers, higher ADA-compliant toilets, lever handles on doors, and once we even installed a chairlift from the garage to the house. We've completed fifteen accessibility projects in 2011, and I'm going to ask Barbara Paul to come up and speak to you in just a minute about her experience. We also have been working with two of our affordable senior projects to convert existing tubs in the units at St. Brim Manor and at Esmer Meadows Apartments to walk-in showers, so that the people that live in these units can continue to live there as long as they're able. Sometimes, that little change is all that's needed to allow someone to continue to live independently. We've completed eight units at St. Brim Manor with seventy-two minus eight, whatever that is, sixty-something left to go, sixty-four more to go, and all fifty units were just completed at Esmer Meadows Apartments. These projects also have an economic development benefit, since eight businesses were involved in making these improvements and received over two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in funding just in 2011, and provided work to fifteen employees. So I'd like to recognize Tracy DiFrancesco, who's here, she's on my staff. She's on my staff, and she manages these very successful programs. Believe me, we couldn't get all the things done with the CDBG program that we do without Tracy's able assistance. So, now Barbara, if you'd like to come up and say a few words, and then we'll accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Kathy. My name is Barbara Paul, and I live at 4335 Bella Vista Drive in Longmont, and I want to say good evening to the council, and I want to thank Tracy for inviting me to come. It gives me an opportunity to thank the Housing Authority Program and the City Council in the City of Longmont for, one of the most amazing things that I've ever seen happen, and is a handicapped bathroom put into our house for my husband. I just have to say thank you. It's amazing that, as a City Council, you are so far-reaching into the insight that goes into the lives of the people that you serve. Your responsibilities are endless, and you are caretakers of our city, but it's so touching to know firsthand how deep you go. It's not all about the airport, or about the mall, or about the streets, or even all the structural things that make Longmont a wonderful city that it is. Thank you for your concerns and your caring that go much deeper and personal. My beloved husband, Keith, of almost 58 years, is a dear man whose body is failing him with multiple disabilities from many health issues, and he needs my 24/7 care as well as hospice. And a year ago, we had reached a point that we had to make some major decisions. It was impossible for me to get him into the shower, or even into the small commode room where the toilet is. He was always in serious danger of falling. He was still using the walker some in the house, but that's passed, and he's now totally In January, when our City of Longmont Statement came, there was a little insert in it that was regarding the Architectural Barrier Removal Program, and it was totally God at work because our daughter Annie called and talked to Molly Elroy, we talked to Tracy, and we completed the financial evaluation, and the plan was in motion. And within four months, we had a complete, beautiful, and ever-so-efficient and beneficial bathroom, blessed as we are, we certainly are. This bathroom has enabled us to give Keith quality personal care, and the best part of that is that we can do it at home. It's not in a nursing home. It's an awesome program, and I would encourage others struggling with like situations and those decisions that they have to make about their loved ones to seek their help. Everyone involved, from community service, affordable housing, to the contractor they hired, John Bailey, they were a joy to work with and to have in our home, and we know them as friends and to know that they had our best interest in heart, so we thank you deeply.
Thank you so much. Would you both come forward for the presentation? Next, we have a proclamation designating the month of April as Fair Housing Month in Longmont. A proclamation designating the month of April 2012 as Fair Housing Month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas April 2012 marks the 44th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, which affirms the right of every citizen to obtain housing of their choice regardless of race, color, sex, religion, national orientation, disability, or family status, and whereas Colorado law also affirms the right of every citizen to obtain housing of their choice regardless of race, color, creed, religion, sex, sexual orientation, national origin, disability, marital status, or family status, and whereas these laws prohibit discrimination and harassment in all aspects of housing, including sales and rentals, eviction, terms and conditions, mortgage loans, and insurance, and land use and zoning, and are vital to ensure that Longmont is a welcoming and inclusive community where everyone can belong. And whereas, in recognition of Wes Walling Weber's decision to fair housing education and the City of Longmont to further the importance of the Fair Housing Act for all, now, therefore, I, Dennis El Combs, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 2012 as Fair Housing Month in Longmont. And I guess coming forward, we've got Carmen Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Welcome, City Manager. Carmen Ramirez with Community and Neighborhood Resources. Just briefly, want to let you know that our fair housing program, we do a lot of education, and we have been blessed to have someone who's been dedicated to the community to come in and do fair housing training, and that's Wes Walling Weber, who has been helping us for several years now. I'm going to let you hear from him directly how he got started with us because Longmont, of course, is ahead of the times, and he's going to tell you real quickly what brought him to Longmont and since then what's brought that friendship. And while he does that, I have a present for everybody here. We have a Fair Housing Five book. It's a great little book that you can share with your children, or grandchildren, or donate to a school. So, I'm going to pass these out, and I'm going to let Wes say a few words.
Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you very much, Carmen. Well, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, Mayor, City Council members. I've been coming up here for a while from the Castle Rock Parker area, so you can tell from that that I'm pretty fond of Longmont. And fair housing training's been a huge part of my career. I've dedicated all my career to representing and defending people in civil rights cases, especially fair housing. But Longmont has a real passion for providing that type of education to this community, ranging from Carmen Ramirez and Susan Spalding's work with residential housing to John, I'm not sure of John's last name because I haven't seen him in a while, but phenomenal individual, to homeowner associations. And that commitment's meant a lot to me, and the primary reason why, as a proud native, is fair housing laws started right here in Colorado before the federal government even passed those laws. So, that's something everybody in this room can really be proud of, that we're that progressive of a state, that we passed one of the first ever civil rights laws. So, thank you for honoring me teaching up here and providing workshops because it's really been a pleasure. I appreciate seeing you tonight.
Thanks, Wes. You both come forward for your presentation. Food Share Drive Week in Longmont. Whereas hunger denies dignity, lessens human energy, erodes community and family stability, and imparts the potential of people and societies to achieve, and whereas the Community Food Share exists so that those in need in Boulder and Broomfield Counties have enough to eat, and whereas Community Food Share distributes over 7.5 million meals in 2011, consistent with the Food Guild's plate throughout Boulder and Broomfield Counties through over 50 member agencies and through its own direct distribution programs, and whereas 3,982,770 pounds of nutritionist food, 53% of the total food distributed by Community Food Share in 2011 were distributed in the Longmont area through 17 member agencies and through its own direct distribution program. And whereas, Longmont citizens are very generous and compassionate people with a long and strong history of support of Community Food Share in its 31 years of service, and our community, and whereas The Times Call is the sponsor of the 24th Annual Hunger Hurts the Whole Community Food Drive in Longmont for the Community Food Share from April 4th through April 15th, 2012. Now, therefore, I, Dennis El Combs, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the weeks of April 4th through the 15th, 2012, as the Community Food Share Food Drive Weeks in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to be aware of the special and virtual service provided to the hunger in Longmont by the Community Food Share, and to donate food and dollars with a generous spirit for those in need. And the recipients of this, Pete Storz?
I'll make my comments very short. My name is Pete Storz. I'm a proud business owner here in the City of Longmont. I'm also a Community Food Share Board Member. As you heard, there is hunger still in our community, and unfortunately, that demand continues to grow, and really, there's no expectation that that will abate anytime soon. So, everyone's contribution is very much appreciated, and certainly appreciate, Mayor, your support and the council's support for a food drive. Over half of the food we distribute ends up in the stomachs of people in Longmont, so we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Next, we have a proclamation designating April 4th through the 15th, 2012, as National Library Week in Longmont. And this will be presented to Judith Anderson. This is a proclamation designating April 9th through the 15th, 2012, as National Library Week in Longmont, Colorado, whereas libraries have historically served as our nation's greatest equalizers of knowledge by providing free access to all, and whereas libraries work to meet the changing needs of their users, including building collections, expanding outreach services, and increasing programming, and whereas our nation's libraries provide a forum for diverse ideas and points of view that help us better stand each other and ourselves, and whereas librarians are trained professionals, helping people of all ages and backgrounds find and interpret the information they need to live, learn, and work in challenging economy, and whereas librarians design and offer programs to meet their community's economic needs, providing residents with resume writing classes, interviewing workshops, and job-seeking resources, and whereas libraries are part of the American dream, places for education, opportunity, and lifelong learning, and whereas the Longmont Public Library, the Friends of the Longmont Library, and the Longmont Community are celebrating National Library Week and the First Library Festival, therefore, I, Dennis El Combs, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 9th through the 15th, 2012, as National Library Week in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to visit the library this week to take advantage of the wonderful resources and programs available because you belong at your Longmont
Good evening, Mayor Combs, members of council. I'm Judith Anderson, the Director at the Longmont Library, and I'd like to thank you for including us in proclamation night. It's very nice to be here. I have with me an amazing group of people. They're library staff, members of the library board, friends of the, members of the Friends Board, and library patrons who, six months ago, in October, formed a committee to bring a literary event to Longmont. And when they did this, I said, you know, it'll take about a year. It's okay to start small. We know we'll work our way up. And so, here we are, six months later, with a first-class, week-long event that celebrates local authors, books, reading. It celebrates National Library Week, and it truly welcomes all to the library because everyone does belong at their library. Longmont's First Library Festival kicks off next Monday at 7:00, where we are unveiling a little bit early, an anthology of local writers. More than 280 people submitted contributions, and then the Friends Board selected 78 authors to be included, so we have copies for you tonight. And I started reading this morning before I went to work, and I think you'll really enjoy it. The anthology includes children and adults, professional writers and amateurs. Everyone was invited to contribute, and I think we have a wonderful selection here. So, that's Monday night at 7:00. We're welcoming all the authors, and we're having a reception, and the entire community is invited to that. Throughout the week, we have music Tuesday night. Jamie Stone, who's a banjoist, will be playing, and then we have authors for the rest of the week. Wednesday, Manuel Ramos, Kathy Brandt on Thursday, Gail Carson Levine, who is flying in from New York. She wrote "Ella Enchanted" if you have children of a certain age. But her talk will be for all ages, talking about her craft. We also have Melanie and Steve Tam, who are coming on Saturday, and Steve Jenkins on Sunday, so a week-long, packed full. I'd also like to bring your attention to Friday afternoon, where we have 75 local authors all coming to the library to do book signings and talk with their fans. There'll be a bookstore open throughout the events, where you can buy copies of their work and then have them signed, so Friday afternoon will be very special. We'd like to invite you to that. We need to give a big thank you to the Friends of the Library. It's through their book sales and the money that they raise that we were able to finance the festival. They've been a great support. They support us on summer reading program. They are bringing us Prospector, which I'll be back to talk to you about later in the year, and so they're also bringing us the literary event that's happening next week, so we have a big thank you to them. And we'd like to welcome all of you next week, or any other time, to come and visit us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, dear. So, let's have the T-shirts in front. We'll have two rows. Yeah, yeah, come out in front. There you go. The whole front. Library Week in Longmont. And this will be presented to Judith Anderson. This is a proclamation designating April 9th through the 15th, 2012 as National Library Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas libraries have historically served as our nation's greatest equalizers of knowledge by providing free access to all and whereas libraries work to meet the changing needs of their users, including building collections, expanding outreach services, and increasing programming. And whereas our nation's libraries provide a forum for diverse ideas and points of view that help us better stand each other and ourselves. And whereas librarians are trained professionals, helping people of all ages and backgrounds find and interpret the information they need to live, learn, and work in challenging economy. And whereas librarians design and offer programs to meet their community's economic needs, providing residents with resume writing classes, interviewing workshops, and job-seeking resources. And whereas libraries are part of the American dream, places for education, opportunity, and lifelong learning. And whereas the Longmont Public Library, the Friends of the Longmont Library, and the Longmont community are celebrating National Library Week and the First Library Festival, therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 9th through the 15th, 2012 as National Library Week in Longmont. And I invite all citizens in the community to visit the library this week to take advantage of the wonderful resources and programs available because you belong at your Longmont Public Library.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. I'm Judith Anderson, the Director at the Longmont Library, and I'd like to thank you for including us in proclamation night. It's very nice to be here. I have with me an amazing group of people. They're library staff, members of the library board, friends of the Friends Board, and library patrons who, six months ago, in October, formed a committee to bring a literary event to Longmont. And when they did this, I said, you know, it'll take about a year. It's okay to start small. We know we'll work our way up. And so here we are, six months later, with a first-class, week-long event that celebrates local authors, books, reading. It celebrates National Library Week, and it truly welcomes all to the library because everyone does belong at their library. Longmont's First Library Festival kicks off next Monday at 7:00, where we are unveiling a little bit early, an anthology of local writers. More than 280 people submitted contributions. And then the Friends Board selected 78 authors to be included. So we have copies for you tonight. And I started reading this morning before I went to work, and I think you'll really enjoy it. The anthology includes children and adults, professional writers and amateurs. Everyone was invited to contribute, and I think we have a wonderful selection here. So that's Monday night at 7:00. We're welcoming all the authors, and we're having a reception, and the entire community is invited to that. Throughout the week, we have music Tuesday night. Jamie Stone, who's a banjoist, will be playing. And then we have authors for the rest of the week. Wednesday, Manuel Ramos. Kathy Brandt on Thursday. Gail Carson Levine, who is flying in from New York. She wrote "Ella Enchanted" if you have children of a certain age. But her talk will be for all ages, talking about her craft. We also have Melanie and Steve Tam, who are coming on Saturday, and Steve Jenkins on Sunday. So a week-long, packed full. I'd also like to bring your attention to Friday afternoon, where we have 75 local authors all coming to the library to do book signings and talk with their fans. There'll be a bookstore open throughout the events, where you can buy copies of their work and then have them signed. So Friday afternoon will be very special. I'd like to invite you to that. We need to give a big thank you to the Friends of the Library. It's through their book sales and the money that they raised that we were able to finance the festival. They've been a great support. They support us on summer reading program. They are bringing us Prospector, which I'll be back to talk to you about later in the year. And so they're also bringing us the literary event that's happening next week. So we have a big thank you to them. And we'd like to welcome all of you next week or any other time to come and visit us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So let's have the T-shirts in front. We'll have two rows. Yeah, yeah. Come out in front. There you go.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, will you introduce the first item on the study session?
Mayor, item 5A is 2012 Union Reservoir Camping Recommendations, which will be presented by Dan Wolford with Public Works and Natural Resources.
Thank you. Mayor Coombs, council members, new city manager, welcome. I'm Dan Wolford, Manager of Parks, Open Space and Greenways for the city. And I'm here to share with you tonight, or staff recommendation anyhow, to change some of the camping operations out at Union Reservoir. What I thought we would do to start out with was give you a little bit of an orientation program, and as soon as Rego can pull up that map, we'll start there. As he's pulling that up. Thank you, sir. Let me start out by just sharing with you that the city took over the Union Reservoir lease back in 1991. And at that point in time, we had a total visitation of 11,644 people and netted an annual revenue of just short of $30,000. So with that and over, you know, a number of years, almost 20 years, net revenues for Union Reservoir last year were $250,000, and our total visitation was $177,000. So we've seen some significant growth in what we're doing out at the reservoir. Additionally, what I'd like to do is, I don't know how easy this is to see this map that kind of depicts some of the additional responsibilities that go on and some additional information. Can you see that? Well, first of all, the reservoir is roughly 740 acres of water, and the perimeter lands around that is approximately 80 acres. And as I mentioned, you know, the visitation, the numbers of dollars that were generated, we typically, out at Union Reservoir, have a 75% cost recovery with our operations. Our hours of operations are typically March 1st, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that's seven days a week. Starting May 1st, historically, it's been a, throughout the end of October, it's really been a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation with camping going on. And then again, back to November through February, it's walk-in access. But just to share with you some of the additional responsibilities that the Rangers have out at Union Reservoir. We have a handicap fishing pier, which is right up here in A, which the Rangers just finished doing some contract management with the total revision and reconstruction of that handicap fishing pier with now a trek surface, so a little less to maintain up there. We do have a boat launch, and that public boat launch is here. It's in number D, where we have, during the typical season, we have two Rangers that are out there, seasonal Rangers, that do boat inspections for every boat that comes out to the reservoir. So what we're looking for is really looking for invasive species on those boats and making certain the appropriate safety gears with that boat. So as you recall, a couple of weeks ago, when we had the incident out at Union Reservoir, before they put on, those Rangers made that inspection and ensured that those PFDs were on that reservoir, or on that boat. Then we have a public swim beach, which is on H. Again, we're open on that swim beach basically between the two key summer holidays, and we've got a total of 10 lifeguards that rotate through that and keep that open. And we're quite busy on Saturdays and Sundays, well, even, you know, Friday afternoons also. We also have a playground and a sand beach volleyball, two shelters. We do have a significant area, one of the only locations in this is I, which is a dog off-leash area, the only one that we have in the city that has access to water. So we get quite a bit of use in that particular location. The reservoir is wakeless, but we allow motors, boats on that. So we do have a wide variety of fishing and other activities associated with the boating. We have three user groups that the Rangers supervise and manage. The first is this K, which is the Sailing Club and our Sculling Club that comes out of this area. And typically on Wednesday evenings and Saturdays and Sundays, they typically have Regas out there sponsored by the Sailing Club. Additional, the other two areas is in J, which is the Leaf Lease, which is the Longmont Electric Airplane Flyers Club, which is, again, it's a remote-controlled electric airplane. And then Section G, it's no longer, it used to be the BMX track, but it's now being leased by Hobby Town USA, and they do remote-controlled cars and vehicles out there on weekends. And then last but not least, we have our camping. We have 24 recreational vehicle sites over here, and then on this side, we have 14 tent camp sites. So with that, it keeps these guys relatively busy with what they're doing.
Was it possible to add another head count?
That's always an alternative. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. My question is, it's, I don't remember, in the master plan for Union Reservoir, is there camping?
Mayor and councilmembers, in the master plan, there is significant changes to the camping component, which would include significant improvements to the campground, which then would bump those, we actually increased the camping numbers, but we also provided water, showers, electricity, all of which is not present there today.
What timeframe would that be present?
As long as I've been an employee with the City of Longmont, the expansion of Union Reservoir has been 15 to 20 years out. I would look to Dale Rattamaker and say, has that changed? So likely, 15 to 20 years out before we would probably implement those significant changes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan, for bringing this information to us. One recommendation I would make is, since some people use that three-day weekend as a mini-vacation, I think we should really extend the weekday camping, not just for that holiday day that falls during the week, because sometimes people take an extra day on either side of that weekend. So I would recommend if the holiday falls on a Friday, we actually extend the camping to Thursday night. And also, on the Monday of that holiday weekend, just to bookend it, because, you know, people do like to get an early start on it. And they're not just gonna be there, you know, if they get off at 5:00 and they want to come up to Longmont, it's a two-hour drive, you know, they want a full day of activity on the day they have off, and they want to stay over that Thursday night, not just the Friday night. So I would suggest that we look at, you know, adding one more weekday on those big holiday weekends, because people make a vacation of it. So that would be my suggestion, that I think that that would be less restrictive. In fact, we may lose people, if we don't have that extra day on either end of those holiday weekends, we may lose the visitors' revenue and the goodwill for those people planning a little vacation. And they may not know from our visitor's site, and I don't know if you're gonna coordinate this information on the, have you taken this to the Longmont Area Visitors Association and mentioned that to them to see if that was gonna be an impact for what, how they market the city?
Mayor and councilmembers, no, we have not.
You know, before you implement it, I would actually check in with them, because they're going gangbusters to market every bit of the city for visitors. And, you know, if we can do that check-in with them, with that board, just to get their feeling for it, I'd feel more comfortable to get their way in on it as well.
Mayor and councilmembers, Sandy and I are actually meeting with the new executive director, Lava, here in the next couple of weeks. He'd be happy to run that by them. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So here's where I'm kind of at a loss, okay? Councilmember Finley and myself, we were the only ones that voted down the Union Reservoir Master Plan. And when it was voted down, I was told, well, silly you, we've got this $10 million expansion and we wanna enable people to use Union. And here we are, two months later, already talking about cutting back on services that we're offering to the public. And so I didn't vote for it because I didn't understand it, and I guess I still don't understand it. So question number one, so how does shifting park rangers to other areas, but not increasing or decreasing actual money spent on full-time employees save us $12,000? That's, I'll just start with that one. How does it save us $12,000 bucks?
Mayor and councilmembers, I mean, from the perspective, it saves us from the camping operation, but that transition then would shift, as you would say, into our Ranger Patrol and into the district parks. So if you wanna consider that a wash then, staff, that's where we come up with the additional $5,500 to make it a total wash by expanding the boat storage.
Can't, let me, wouldn't it, what about keeping the way it is, but just emptying the trash and doing the cleaning on like Thursday night? That way, people who wanna camp on the weekends, normal citizens, have a clean, fresh perspective. And then if someone's really hard up on their luck and need a place to stay, they can stay there Monday through Friday, or, and then, I guess I'm just not understanding how it's gonna, how it's gonna save us money, and I'm also not understanding the advantages of limiting camping out at Union. I guess I'm just not understanding. Call me slow.
Mayor and councilmembers, I won't go that far. What it really does is it shifts, looking at our core services of what the Ranger program is doing, and we have not been able to get out onto the greenways and into our district parks to provide those customer services, to do the law enforcement, to make certain the dogs are on leash and those kinds of things. This is a way of pulling them out of Union during the middle of the week, you know, at 6:00 AM when the McIntosh is crazy busy, and putting them out there and providing those services out there. What that means, if they're not able to do that, they will be spending their time cleaning fire rings every day, emptying trash, doing restrooms, doing those types of activities that we felt were a higher priority by providing those customer services out throughout the city. Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I was recently out at St. Frank State Park, and they are expanding and adding more and more campsites out there, because that's what they're built for. They are catering to Longmont residents as well as Front Range residents and people who are looking for the staycation. So to me, it seems to make economic sense for our city to, you know, give St. Frank State Park that business so that we can focus on being able to service other areas of our city. So it makes sense to me.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Then have we ever approached the people that are staying there to see if they would be willing to volunteer the time to clean up since, you know, in return for staying there? Would they pick up the trash? Would they clean the rings? Would they do the bathrooms?
Mayor and councilmembers, we did an RFP actually a couple of years ago to solicit just that as a park host program. The difficulty is that we have no showers, we have no flush toilets, we have no running water, and at that point in time, we got no response.
But I'm talking about the people that are staying there during the week. Could they pick up the trash? Could they clean the fire rings?
Mayor and councilmembers, from my perspective, they certainly would be capable of doing that. From our experience and what we've seen with the homeless group last year, it was very interesting dynamics that went on. The difficulty that we have is, say, an individual decides to volunteer, however they decide to leave the park on a Saturday for their own vacation, and we're stuck, I shouldn't say stuck, but we're left with the responsibilities of them doing all these, you know, tasks that this individual has volunteered to do. Yes, they are certainly capable of doing those tasks. Councilmember Levinson.
So Dan, I'll put you on the spot here, because I'm remembering back from when we do budget discussions and Natural Resources staff told us that we could cut a Ranger, or cut three-quarters time on a Ranger, and we were given a great, strong economic argument for that, and yet it seems like we really do need that Ranger. And so I would like to just bring it up to remind council that, you know, if you really do need the Ranger services, and maybe this year, we're gonna get pushback from citizens who wanna go out and camp on a Thursday, so it's not crowded on a Friday, or Saturday, or Sunday, or maybe there are people that are working, you know, a second job and they're working all weekend. I mean, this is what our economy is like. People are working on the weekends now. Maybe they can only, you know, get that break one day during the weekday, and they wanna do that. You know, I would also like you to, at budget time, you know, remind us of this discussion so we don't forget, and also to garner support maybe for an extra Ranger position, because you're making some justification that we really should do it. And it sometimes seems to be a disconnect with me when I remember back at budget time saying, well, in the way we're looking at all this stuff, we're gonna eliminate this Ranger position and do something else. But it seems like you're really telling us now, the Ranger positions are very important. So can you help me, you know, compare and contrast, you know, what I'm thinking and I'm hearing is disjointed, you know, one part of the year you tell us we don't need the Ranger, this part of the year you tell us we do.
Mayor and council, if I could just sort of jump in here real quick, a couple of things. One is, is the analysis that the staff has done thus far is quite simple, in that the highest use of the campground is on the weekends and the holidays. And from a more of a business perspective, that is when you have more paying customers at your campground. And that's really where we're trying to come from. And if you recall, during the budget sessions last year, council, you did approve a half FT increase from the 2010, or, excuse me, 2011 budget levels. And we talked a little bit about our desire to get a higher presence out on the greenways and the other district parks of the city. And so there was a trade-off, and there is, and that's really what we're talking about tonight, some trade-offs whereby we're trying to maintain the highest and most used aspects of the camping program at Union, while also trying to redirect the staff without increasing our total labor budget to get some coverage out into the other areas. I'm not sure where the council's going with the whole thing tonight, but if the council is interested, I believe I can find some savings in the budget this year to bring another part-time person on, if you wanna try to keep camping open the other season during the weekday out at Union. I do believe, though, the community process that we went through, working with ELHOT and with the citizens and with your Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, all of whom concurred that this was a reasonable plan, it was a balance that said we're gonna try to maintain those aspects of camping. And Councilmember Levinson, you did mention that, you know, we may want to consider an additional day on some of those holiday weekends, might make sense. Certainly, that's something worth a look at, but we really are trying to keep our overall labor budget and not grow it, and also try to get staff patrolling as Rangers in different areas around our systems. That's sort of the bottom line of what we're trying to get to.
Mayor, may I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Thank you. What, I know we haven't, our cutoff date now has passed for large event stuff, but for things that are not large events, if you have a group come to you saying, you know, we wanna do a Wednesday and Thursday night and a weekend thing, and we've got a group of 60 people, or Lava has, since we haven't checked in with Lava, we don't know if they've gotten any inquiries for during-the-week camping events, you know, from groups. And so in the future, I really advise, since we've got a contract with somebody who's marketing the heck out of Longmont, every aspect, not just hotel rooms, but there are people that love to do this, can't run, you know, maybe they wanna spend one night in a hotel to get the showers, but then they're willing to be showerless for a day or two at the campsite. But what would, how would we accommodate a group that would want to come in on a Thursday if we have this no camping policy? How, we have any contingency plans?
Mayor and councilmembers, I think that process is relatively simple, from the perspective that those size of activities would all go through the use-of-public-places permit. And they would solicit input from all the departments, including the Rangers at Union Reservoir. And certainly, if it would accommodate and show some economic development or opportunities, that I think it would be a very huge and positive aspect, and we would make those adjustments.
So when we do this policy, my suggestion would be that, you know, by special arrangement for a group, this could be done, because if we just publish it, never any more weekday camping, we may drag away a group that will never even approach us to ask, well, would you make an exception if we've got 60 people coming and they're gonna be there, you know, they need to come Thursday night? So I would make sure we have some caveat about a procedure to do that use-of-public-places.
Mayor and councilmembers, I certainly agree with you from that perspective. And I think what we would include in those kinds of special requests is, you know, if there was a need for additional sandlets, or like there is currently, you know, what is your trash plan, that those, they would be held responsible for doing some of those kinds of things. But I'm certainly agreeable with that. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. Hey, Dan. I don't like the idea of cutting the week, but if we're, if it's not generating the revenue to keep itself up, there's really no other choice. It's kinda like with the, I hate to use it, and I know Jeff's here, kinda like with the ice rink. You know, there was a time when it was not 100% self-sufficient. Now it is. I'd like to be able to have a discussion, if we're 10 to 20 years out to, you know, making the master plan happen or potentially expanding the reservoir. You know, we are losing revenue to St. Frank State Park because we don't have electricity, we don't have any of the infrastructure, showers, you know, what have you. Maybe in the interim, in that 10 to 20 years, that we start implementing just a few of those options there, that maybe we can attract more camping nights. That might be something that, no, I think the Parks and Rec Board could look at, maybe even I'll mention it at the retreat coming up in a couple of weeks. I get the, I remember when we were talking about the park staff and the Rangers, and, you know, even if we added a Ranger, we would still be losing money because there's not people camping there during the week. And while I do have concerns with homelessness, the park is not a long-time area to stay. It's for camping, short-term camping, week camping. I really think that having, you know, I'll move option one, but with a caveat that talk with Lava and get their input regarding about how they market Union Reservoir and about the camping nights. And then, as Councilmember Levinson said, if there's a long weekend or some groups that would like to come in, try to be as flexible, yeah, as flexible as possible. You might find that group that is hardcore and doesn't wanna take a shower, or have use of bathroom facilities, or like to use a porta potty for a week or two. You never know. But until we get those facilities out there, you know, I think that's a discussion to have, whether or not we can implement those in a short period of time, maybe within the next five years. And maybe we go back to having it seven days a week of camping out there.
Second.
You don't wanna respond, Dan?
Well, Mayor and councilmembers, I agree wholeheartedly with you, that I feel it's a service that I would love to be able to do, but I also feel that we also wanna be able to provide the service on the greenways and our district parks. And with the limited resources that we have, it's, what's the priority? What makes sense? And I think staff has come up with these recommendations that you moved on, so thank you for your support.
Sure. The one question I have, and I was looking it up while you were giving your presentation, and Jim may have to answer this question. The park recreation fee of a dollar ends this year, next year, correct? End of this year?
End of this year.
End of this year, in 2012. How will that affect, I know we did raise the rates at entrance to Union Reservoir, and I'm just kinda curious how that would affect, is that dollar park maintenance fee going to some of Union Reservoir?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Santos, we are intending to talk with you at the retreat about the dollar park maintenance fee that does sunset at the end of 2012, and again, get your direction on whether or not you want us to further analyze that and whether or not there's any interest in extending or changing that. What I will say is that the revenues from the park maintenance fee go into the overall general fund, and they certainly do assist with overall parks operations as well.
Because I remember we raised Union Reservoir, a dollar, $2 at the time? Do we have it?
Mayor and councilmembers, we did not. Last time we increased the fees was in 2008. Staff is currently looking at it for a 2013 budget proposal, really looking and reviewing area reservoirs and campsites. It's looking as though we are pretty much at market for entry fees and that. Likely, the only thing that we will change is the boat storage fees.
Okay. Well, again, once we have some infrastructure out there as far as flushable toilets and showers and electricity for those campers that like to do that, you know, until we do that, you know, I think the recommendation is solid, as much as I hate to move it, but I would like, perhaps next year, in next year's budget, we can look at whether or not we can go seven days a week next year for 2013. Thank you.
I, I guess I'm going to weigh in here. I, I agree with what Councilmember Santos said. It's kind of like, you know, if I put on my, my business hat and you're, and you're a restaurant and you look at your two slowest days of, you know, Monday and Tuesday being low sales, and if you wanted to stay open, you'd have to hire an extra manager and you just do the cost analysis. It just doesn't make sense, and I think that's where we're at here. It's a, it's a business decision. And maybe in the future, when we have more budget and we plan, we can hire more Rangers and be open, you know, eventually seven days a week out there, you know, particularly if we, you know, increase the infrastructure out there. So I, I do agree with Councilmember Santos that it's probably the right thing to do, and I also will support the, the recommendations of the Park and Recreation Advisory Board at this time. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Do you know if there are openings during the week at the other campgrounds around Longmont when we won't have camping anymore?
Mayor Combs, Councilmembers, I do not, but I would be happy to follow up with you on that and, you know, get a general sense from, you know, what historically has happened at the Boulder County Care Grounds and St. Frans State Park as well as the City Lions, Town of Lions.
Yeah, especially if there, you know, if, if there's not a demand in the area, then I'm certainly okay with it. I'm okay, I'm going to vote for it anyway because it does make economic sense. But what do we charge campers?
The entry fee is $8, or, yeah, $8 to come into the, I'm going to double check here. I don't know.
And they only pay the entry fee, they don't pay a camping fee?
They pay both. They, a vehicle entry fee of $8 and then a camping per site is, without a seasonal pass, is $12. With a seasonal pass is $8. So total entry for an evening would be a total of $16.
You might look at raising that a little bit.
And as I mentioned, you know, we're really looking at, again, based on the facilities and what we provide, we're pretty much at market.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Badley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I was a hardcore scouter growing up. In fact, I'm an Eagle Scout. And growing up, we used to have a name for activities that didn't have showers, electricity, or toilets. It's called camping. Question number, question number one, why do we need to babysit the campers during the week? Nobody growing up ever came by and said, hey, I'm your local ranger. How's, how's, how's that dump going? You know, I'm pretty good. Just didn't happen. So why do we need to be there to like, watch people?
Mayor, Councilmembers, I, I think it's really a difference in front range camping than it is maybe US Forest Service camping, where the, there's certainly a different expectation. And we saw a significant increase in that expectation this past year with, with the homeless group, especially from the perspective that as they were at a particular site, you could understand, being a camper, that if you stayed in that particular site for three months, there would be no vegetation. So we had to move them on a regular weekly basis. And if they had a compressor or a generator so they could watch their TV, they needed help and assistance. And when they didn't like what they, the Rangers had to interact, it was
Okay.
Significant.
Okay, so did the homeless people pay the $8?
Yes, sir.
They were paying the $8. Okay. So theoretically, the argument is that if we make it against the law, you can enforce it and get them to leave and close the campgrounds. Because my concern is that you're still going to be having, I mean, you're still going to have to pay. If they're no longer there, why don't they just go? There's no longer anybody watching the campsite. I mean, so aren't you still going to have to have people come and enforce the fact that the law is you can't camp there?
Mayor, Councilmembers, absolutely. I mean, there's going to be some level of interaction. I mean, we will count, especially on those evenings when we are leaving at nine o'clock, we will be locking the gate behind us, making certain that there's no one in the park, and then assuring that we have the support from the police department to make a routine patrol through there on the evenings, as they typically would, you know, throughout the summer anyhow.
Would it also be an option like other people or other areas do, to limit it to just seven days a week? Or, I mean, seven days total, where you can only camp for like, seven days out of whatever? Would that serve the same purpose?
Councilman, I guess I'm not following you in
I guess what I'm saying is other areas limit the number of days you can stay in an area. So what if we just do, instead of saying you've got to be on the weekends, what about just limiting the days to commute at Union?
Again, what we would be doing is going back to what we've done in previous years other than 2011. And that's where we were seeing a decrease in numbers of camping, and certainly the, as we had mentioned earlier, 70% of our activity was going on the weekends. So it just made, you know, again, economical sense, you know, to do this.
Okay.
Thanks. Councilmember Webb?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I, I did look up St. Frans State Park camping. There are 87 campsites located on eight campgrounds. Most sites are on or near the banks of the ponds. Sites 1 through 41 have electrical hookups with water nearby and a centrally located dump station. Sites 42 through 87 have water, sewer, and electric at each site. All sites include a grill, picnic table, and concrete pad. Campgrounds are open year-round and often fill on the weekends. So it sounds as if there are options available. You know, it doesn't make sense to me to extend ourselves and actually go negative in order to keep our campsite open when just to the, to the east, there is a campground that is fully staffed, it has flush toilets, and all the rest, and it's all open year-round. So I think, you know, this really makes sense.
All right. We have a motion from Gabe and the second. Shall we vote? It passes seven to zero. Thank you for your support. Sarah, could you introduce the next item?
Mayor, your next item will be introduced by Mike Fraley with Longmont Power and Communications, and he'll provide an overview on Phase Two of the City Facility Energy Savings Performance Contract.
Yeah, go ahead. Good evening, Mayor Combs and Councilmembers. My name is Mike Fraley, and I work for Energy, I work for Longmont Power and Communications, and I'm in the Energy Services Group there. I am the city's project manager for the Energy Saving Performance Contract, and I am part of the energy management team. And right now, I'd like to just acknowledge some of the other members in the energy management team. You're going to see in the, in the slides that this is a multi-year effort, and I'd like to acknowledge some of the other energy management team members. There are Jeff Friesner, Danielle Hins, Teresa Malloy, Bart McGrane, Jeff Cedar, and Don Webker, and all this, all those staff members have put time into this, and we wouldn't be where we are today without their support, so I want to thank them. I also have to acknowledge a mistake that I made in the council comm upfront. On the second page, basically under the section of Background and Issue Analysis, you'll see Phase One savings, and I have natural gas savings of 948,000 therms. I have one too many zeros in there. It's actually 94,800. My apologies for that mistake. I just have a few slides really to kind of start the discussion out tonight. I've got some background slides that outline the major milestones that we've been through to get to this point. And then I have a slide outlining the three city council meetings that we have scheduled to talk about this matter. Okay, you gave me that, so. Okay. In 2006, the, the city staff formed an energy management team to look at ways to reduce energy use in city facilities. In 2007, we signed a memorandum of understanding to work with the governor's energy office. And we actually, we actually have a local rep in town, his name's John Canfield, and he's been very helpful and, and working with the energy management team all through this. In 2008, we hired McKinstry to do technical energy audits in all of our city facilities. Also in 2008, we applied for a grant from the Department of Local Affairs. And in that application, we identified six buildings that we wanted to work in. So that kind of, that basically kind of helped us decide where to, to split the buildings. So we had a Phase One that included six buildings. 2009, the, what the, the recommendations basically were reviewed and approved by the city manager and the directors team, and then it was brought to council and council passed it in 2009. We started implementing the first phase project in, oh, no, sorry, in 2010, we actually completed that project in September. In September 2011, we basically marked the first full year of energy savings, and those are documented and verified. There'll be more on that a little bit later. And in 2012, early in 2012, we took the Phase Two recommendations to the city manager and the directors, and they basically gave us the approval to bring that information to the city council. And so that's basically why we're here today. We have three council meetings planned to, to talk about the, the Phase Two project. Actually, tonight, we're not looking for any decisions to be made. This is just strictly for information, to share information with the city council, to introduce performance contracting, to talk about the Phase One project and the results of that, as well as the potential project that we have, the recommendations that we have for Phase Two. Then on April 10th, there would be the first reading for the lease contract and ordinance, and answering any questions around those areas. And then we would be back on the 24th for the second reading of the lease contract and ordinance, and the Phase Two performance contract itself, and answer any questions that you have at that point. Here with me tonight is Leslie LaRocque with McKinstry. At this point, I'd like to bring her up. She has some additional slides to present.
Mayor and Councilmembers, good evening. My name is Leslie LaRocque. I am the Business Development Director for McKinstry in the Rocky Mountain region. We are a pre-approved energy services company through the governor's energy office. We're located in Golden, and we've been in Colorado doing these types of projects for the past five years. I'm, I'm going to present tonight a little bit of background on energy performance contracting because I know some of you were here during the Phase One, but some of you were not. And so getting an understanding of what that legislation entails and, and how that works, as well as the results of Phase One and the energy savings that were achieved, and then to talk about the proposal for Phase Two. So performance contracting, there is enabling legislation on the state of, for the state of Colorado, that allows public entities to do energy efficiency projects now and achieve the energy savings over time and actually finance those projects with the energy savings. And an energy services company such as McKinstry guarantees that those savings will be achieved every year in order for you to make your lease payment. Really, it's a great way for public entities to be able to get the funding, to do capital upgrades that also reduce energy costs. So it is a budget-neutral, cash-neutral reallocation of funding. So what is currently in your utility budget or your maintenance budget? If you look at the slide, we basically look at unrealized savings when you, before you start a performance contract, there are things you could do to make yourself more energy efficient in the buildings. So you're, you're paying all of that to your utilities, you have higher maintenance costs with older equipment. You enter into a performance contract where we guarantee a certain amount of energy savings per year. That pays the lease over a certain period of time, and then after the lease is paid off, you still get to enjoy and maintain those savings over time. So the program is managed through the Colorado Governor's Energy Office. It's been around for a long time. The legislation's been on the books for about 15 years, and the program's been active for about 12. About five years ago, the governor's energy office kind of went through a program of pre-qualifying ESCOs, so there are now 14 companies on the list to do this kind of work. Over 160 projects have been constructed, lots of millions of dollars put into energy efficiency in Colorado. And they've worked with most of the larger municipalities, school districts, higher education state agencies in the state. This is a list of some of the cities and towns that have gone through performance contracting, and you guys are obviously on the list as well, Longmont is, for your Phase One. So lots of entities have been doing this over years. There's plenty of proven cases of, of energy savings. Just talking briefly about the process, it does take some time to go through this. And so as Mike mentioned, we were hired in 2008 to perform a technical energy audit, and there are some pretty strict rules that we need to follow in order to do the energy audit, which gets reviewed by staff here at the city as well as the governor's energy office. We have energy auditors that come in and go through the buildings and come up with potential energy conservation measures. We do energy calculations around that, do a lot of data logging and measuring to make sure that what we guarantee is real. The second step is to review the results with the city. So the city's energy management team, we sat down with them and kind of walked through all the various types of measures that could be implemented. And staff decided this is the best package that works for us over a term to be financed. These are the kinds of things that we want to do at the city. We then go about securing financing, and that is done directly between the city and a finance company, and McKinstry just kinds, kind of helps to facilitate that. After the financing is secured, we sign an energy performance contract. The state has put together pretty standard contracts, and we work with each entity to incorporate your general conditions into those contracts. It's really essentially a construction contract that guarantees the savings over time. We then construct or install the energy conservation measures over a period of time. McKinstry then commissions the project. Since we're guaranteeing the energy savings, we need to make sure that all of the equipment is working really well and that the energy savings can be achieved. We provide training to staff. Some of the things that we implement can be fairly sophisticated around control systems, and so we provide training where necessary. And then we go into a measurement and verification period, and that lasts the entire term of the lease contract. And so we come back and we actually measure and verify and provide reports to the governor's energy office and to the city for you to assure that you've actually achieved those savings. And if the savings are not achieved, because we guarantee them, we are actually on the hook to provide a payment to the city so that you could make your lease payment if they weren't achieved. Any questions on performance contracting? Moving on to the Phase One project, we've got a few pictures up here of some of the things that were installed. Just some background. Mike mentioned that we actually focused in on six buildings. And that really was focused around the receipt of a grant from DOLA and needing to implement within a certain timeframe around the grant. So we really looked at the largest energy-consuming buildings that the city owns. Lots of energy conservation measures were evaluated. And the ones that were included were really focused on energy efficiency. We had both energy conservation measures and we also had some facility improvement measures, which are basically capital items that don't necessarily drive a lot of energy savings. But the energy savings from the other measures, we're actually able to pay for quite a bit of capital upgrades at the city in this Phase One project. So lighting, lighting work. We did a lot of work in the buildings to kind of do building tune-ups, which we call retrocommissioning. It's essentially to make sure that the systems are running correctly, what you might do to your car to make sure it's running at its best efficiency. Lots of other measures around HVAC upgrades. We did some solar thermal at your pools, at your rec center pools. And then we really looked at things that needed to be done at the city that were more capital-intensive. So at the Centennial Pool, there was a mechanical system redesign and installation because that system was really antiquated and needed to be replaced. We also did some upgrades here at the Civic Center on the engineering side. So moving into the proven savings. The measurement and verification period, the first year period, went from September 2010 through September 2011. So we gathered data from that timeframe and did our measurement and verification process. And at the end of that, the savings, there was actually a savings surplus of about $9,000. And so that was achieved just based on the measures actually performing a little bit better than what we had originally calculated.
A quick question. How do you normalize out the effects of weather on those savings? I mean, let's say you were comparing a cold year with a hot year. Do you have a way to look at the weather data and try to incorporate that in your data?
We do. So the way that that's really, that that's worked out is that the baseline is set based on three years of data. And that's supposed to kind of take out any anomalies from one year to another. And that's the governor's energy office prescribed method. So we actually set the baseline based on 2006, '07, and '08 data.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This is kind of the breakdown of how the savings were broken out between gas and then on electricity with your base electricity, as well as demand savings. And as you can see, we were a little bit below on the natural gas savings. But we were significantly higher on the demand savings, which has a significant cost associated with it, as well as pretty much right on target for the base electric savings. And the combination of those was a surplus. And I think Mike wanted to talk a little bit about, beyond the energy savings, what other benefits the project brought to the city.
Yeah, so Leslie had kind of mentioned. So some of these are energy savers and some of them have additional benefits. I was just going to highlight some of the additional benefits that we've realized through this project. At the Centennial Pool, we did basically replace all of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment. And by doing that, we're able to get more air changes in the building. And we've really kind of improved the air quality there. In basically five of the six buildings, we replaced most of the lighting. The DSC has been recently remodeled and had pretty up-to-date lighting. The new lighting basically saves energy. And there's a benefit of it doesn't flicker, it doesn't buzz. There's less restrike time. That's some of the issues with older types of lighting. At the rec center, we used to have a condition that would happen in the winter times. Both those doors would go open. And cold air would basically blast through those doors and freeze out the staff at the front. One of the things that we implemented in this project was putting in an air curtain at that door. So now when the doors come open, you get a blast of vertical air coming through. And it has helped kind of mitigate the condition of getting the staff freezing. And I'm also told it keeps leaves and trash out sometimes in the summer months. And we updated HVAC equipment in some areas in the Civic Center. And that has really helped kind of getting better temperature control in some areas. Civic Center and Library HVAC system, the control systems were standardized. And they are, they're web-based now, which has really helped the facility maintenance staff to kind of optimize things there and to be able to kind of check in remotely. They don't actually have to be in the building to see how the systems are operating. The cost avoidance, by doing these in a performance contract, we're able to pay for this equipment through energy savings as opposed to needing capital dollars. So the work at Civic Center and Centennial Pool avoided about 1.2 million of capital expenditure that would have had to happen. The Phase One was able to really leverage kind of more, bring in more effort or more items into the project because we were able to garner almost $500,000 in grants and rebates. And also, there's the operation and maintenance savings associated by getting new equipment in the building. We're not spending staff time and dollars to kind of try to maintain and Band-Aid along old equipment. And that's it kind of for the highlights on the benefits.
So moving on to Phase Two. I think it was always the city's intent, staff's intent, to look at trying to upgrade all of the facilities and do energy efficiency throughout the city. When Phase One kind of came about the way that it did, shortly after that project was under contract and starting to be implemented, we actually began doing the technical energy audit for the rest of the building. So we've had the project developed for quite some time. I think there was, I think the city really wanted to see that the Phase One savings were proven before you moved on to a second phase. So some of the things that are in Phase Two, there's a continuation of lighting upgrades and retrofits throughout the city. There's 22 additional buildings that would be retrofit under this program. There's, and that's really just upgrading it to the most efficient lighting and making sure that we put in controls where necessary. Other measures, there's an additional measure to continue to retrocommission the buildings and make sure that everything is in great working order in the buildings. There are six buildings that this solution is really focused on. And so we go through with a fine-tooth comb and find anything that might potentially be, need repair. And then also make sure that the systems are really dialed in on schedules and optimizing the systems for energy use and also for comfort in the buildings. The FIM number five is a PC power management FIM. That's an interesting one that we've been implementing at multiple locations now, where we actually have software that gets applied to the personal computers to make sure that they're shut down at night. And that they can still be used. People can still VPN in and use the computers if they need to. But the monitors and the computers are actually shut down. Those are really the energy conservation measures that are driving energy savings. And just like we had in Phase One, we're able to also do some capital measures in Phase Two that are paid for by the energy savings from some of the improvement measures. So pool lighting, there is, there are some issues, maintenance issues around the pool lighting. And so there's been a desire to upgrade the lighting in the pools. We're not necessarily going to see energy savings because the pool lighting that's in there is not terribly inefficient. But this will save a lot of maintenance headaches in being able to change out the lights. At Centennial Pool, we're going to be replacing the domestic hot water and the pool boilers, as those are getting to the end of their useful life. And then at Safety and Justice, we're going to be adding controls to the fan coil unit heaters. Again, this is a maintenance item. Right now, they're having to manually control those, which isn't the best, the best way to do that. And in the shoulder seasons where you might want, like right now, where it's hot and then it's cold, you want to make sure that when you need heat, like you did today, that you can actually do that without having to have someone go and turn them on. So that's really the improvement measures that are included in Phase Two. The financials, there's a lot of numbers up here, so I'll go through these. But please feel free to ask any questions. The project is around $960,000. First-year savings of a little less than $69,000 a year. Future capital offset for the boilers and the unit heaters and the pool lighting is about $340,000. The interesting thing about this, and it's actually been good that we didn't implement this earlier because interest rates are so low right now that the city is actually able to take advantage of refinancing the Phase One package, which was financed at 5% interest rate, and add in Phase Two and refinance that whole package at a rate of about 2.7% over a 12-and-a-half-year term. And it's generating a lot of savings that actually, you're actually going to pay less interest over time by doing that and even including Phase Two than you would if you just went forward with your first phase. So pretty incredible story. There are lots of entities that are out there now looking at how they can refinance and repackage these types of lease purchase agreements. So you have paid some interest on the Phase One. But with the interest savings, you would actually see an overall savings of about $145,000 in addition to basically getting the second phase paid for. So next steps, Mike kind of went through this. I think tonight is really a chance for us to explain anything, answer any questions. I think we'll be back again in a week to do the first reading of the lease agreement and the ordinance. And then look at the energy performance contract first reading on the 24th. All of that would be with the intent of closing the financing and signing contracts towards the end of May and starting construction in June. We expect that the construction will be completed before the end of the year.
That was a very good presentation. I do have one question. Did you also look at, I don't know, maybe it's just me that sometimes I feel like particularly in the summertime, the temperatures of the building could be a couple of degrees warmer. And in the wintertime, it could be a couple of degrees cooler. I mean, at my house, I don't match the city. So are we compliant with other cities in how we heat and cool our buildings? Is there like a standard we're trying to meet there? Or could we save a lot of money if we varied that by, you know, one or two degrees each direction?
Mayor Combs, we do actually have a standard, a thermal comfort standard. I don't, off the top of my head, can't tell you the temperatures, but we do have one. Probably always if you're going to not cool it as much in the summer and maybe not heat it as much in the winter, there's definitely savings to be had. But we try to have a bandwidth. And I think historically, we've tried to make sure that the city staff are comfortable. At the same time, we're not way out of a range.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thanks, Mayor Combs. Just a quick comment. Awesome presentation. Protect the environment, save money. Seems pretty easy to me. Good job.
Thank you, Leslie and Mike. That was a great presentation and good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do you want to take a five-minute break before we do the last six? No, we've got one more. Yeah, let's take a break. Bring our meeting back for order. Sarah, can you introduce the next council item?
Mayor, your final study session item is an update on the National League of Cities Conference, which will be presented by Councilmember Levison.
All right. I'll chime in one.
No, that's not it. So, I thought I would give you guys a little bit of a highlight of some of the activities and things that I attended and the mayor. I'm hoping you'll chime in to us because, you know, I've got my little notebook of notes here. A couple of items that I've already talked a little bit to staff about, one of which came out of the, I'm on the Finance Administration and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and our steering committee had an interesting presentation around an issue that's coming up with stabilization of money market funds. And I gave, Sandy and I think we forwarded some of this information to Jim Golden, a handout they gave about keeping money market funds working for investors and Americans, for America. And basically, the SEC is going to do some, make some rule changes that would make money market mutual funds less appealing. And I know that with our investment group, we've had a little bit of a response also that ICMA, which helps ensure our pension fund, this would affect them. For some other cities, they may depend more on money market rates and this industry more than we do, but it does have an effect on our city. So, I think that we can get you, I don't know if we've gotten the material out to council members, but if you would please review it. As Councilmember Bagley is familiar with and being on the oil and gas task force, you know, the rulemaking is where the rubber hits the road many more times than legislation. And there is a 60 to 90 day comment period that's, we've already passed through three weeks of it. And I would suggest if we could send a letter and take a position on this, the more the SEC hears from cities and others commenting on this rule, the more impact that does have. And that was actually also a recommendation from National League of Cities staff members to weigh in on these issues of rulemaking when it does affect city operations. So that was one item. Heard a lot of good presentations, but one other thing that might be interesting for us is to look at the Bank On model, helping lower income people become bankable and working with our local banks to see whether or not we can't get people out of the payday loan and the check cashing services. You know, some people spend thousands of dollars a year just to get their paycheck cash because they don't have access to banking. And, or they keep large amounts of cash on hand, which is, you know, a risk for them if they're a victim of crime or break-in or something. They could really lose their entire income. And then also want to bring your attention to another interesting thing, which might have some effect on our, some of our youth. There is a program that, there was a presentation for the Workforce Strategy Center on something called the Verified Resume, which provides disadvantaged young adults with a kind of a passport for potential employers that would attest to their responsible behavior and communication and collaboration skills. And I have information on that. Basically, you know, mentors they may work with could basically give them a report card that would rank their skills in certain areas so that if they don't have a great personal background, maybe it'll give them a leg up in getting some employment. And I think it could, at least taking, have staff take a look at this and see whether or not we could implement something that would give some of our disadvantaged youth that may have some spotty work history, some kind of way to prove to get that first job. So, I think that that would be a useful issue to address. And then lastly, I was able to go to a special briefing at the State Department where there was a presentation on leveraging sister city relationships as a driver of economic development. I know in the past, we've done some work, well, many years ago, more than a decade, where we leveraged our sister city relationship with Japan to bring some more industry to Longmont. And there were representatives there from the country of South Africa, specifically this one region called KwaZulu-Natal. And they were looking for any kind of, you know, partnership opportunities. Even, I had some conversations with, I think that some of the women, one was the equivalent of a council member, and then the other one was from how I guess she described her position, she had been a city council member, but then she's now a council member for a group that oversees many cities. So I'm suspecting it might more be like a county commissioner. And they're looking for pretty much just some relationship building. I know that Seagate has some extensive sales in South Africa a couple of years ago when they were here before and at the International Council Luncheon. I spoke with them and they knew the city of Longmont because of Seagate, when I mentioned Seagate. And they were very pleased with the products they had bought from Seagate. And, you know, it would be maybe an interesting possibility, you know, to see where things go. They are desperate to know what people do in this country on civic engagement, how to engage their citizens, be productive, and get people involved. And, you know, in general, I think that they're just looking for business opportunities both ways. So, you know, I have people's business cards and be interested in exploring some things. And I wasn't able to go to the International Council Luncheon, so I'll hand it off to the mayor to get his reflection of what happened at International Council.
Well, we were pretty isolated. It was a kind of a small room and just groups of different tables, but there was people from South Africa and people from Germany and, you know, and basically, I get the idea that all over the world, cities pretty much have the same problems to certain degrees. And I came away feeling that, boy, we're darn lucky here in Longmont, in our city compared to other cities in the world. And in England, basically, they, their cities are funded 55% from the federal government, so they have a different relationship. But, you know, that was only an hour-long lunch meeting, so I didn't come away with anything, you know, really dynamical. I thought it was interesting that in South Africa, they don't have mayors, they have Lord Mayors and Lord Mayor protests. But...
So I guess from now on, we address you as Lord, for this one time, Lord Mayor Coombs.
But, what I came away from, the whole experience was that, basically, city of Longmont, particularly, cities are really struggling with the new EPA standards for water and sewer, and we're so far ahead of where a lot of other cities are. I mean, people are going to be struggling to meet these new standards. And when I hear the horror stories of how these people have like very little assets and they have to meet these new standards and what great shape we're in, I just feel really, really thankful that, you know, we've planned ahead and we've had a very financially responsible city. And, you know, I think we're in really, really good shape compared to a lot of other city leaders that I talked to. The other thing that, I did spend quite a bit of time talking with the mayor of a city in Texas that's been dealing with, you know, oil and gas fracking and leasing and, and basically, she warned me that we should have an emergency management plan in place or at least consider that because sometimes accidents do happen. And, you know, they had a recent situation where a pipe ruptured and the information they had on how to shut off the valves and stuff was incorrect or mislabeled. And so anyway, we need to be kind of really looking to the future and make sure that when we are, you know, when this does come into a city, or if it does, that we at least have a decent emergency management plan for, in the event of some sort of catastrophic accident. Anyway, I guess I'd like to turn this back over to Sarah.
And the other, one of the other sessions I attended was, they had some very high-powered attorneys there that have been litigating cases before, or watching cases before the Supreme Court. And there were a couple of cases that they thought to highlight for cities. One specifically, which I imagine others may have heard of, is the GPS case that the warrant, well, the case of USA versus Jones, where the law enforcement officers put a GPS device on a car of a suspect and the Supreme Court recently dealt with that case. And basically, they didn't have a warrant for every jurisdiction that that person traveled through to build their case. So, the advice was get a warrant every time, no matter where they're going. And then, you know, some other cases, one, Raichl versus Howard, where the issue was a police officer being, you know, sued for arresting someone in retaliation, they thought for their, for voicing their First Amendment protected speech rights. And they said that this case is significant for cities because it has a link to Occupy Movement cases. So, just some cautionary notes there, and then the rest of the cases are probably inside baseball that I'll enjoy talking to Eugene with. But, you know, overall, there, when we were there in Washington, the transportation bill got passed. There was a lot of pressure and people calling and getting some reauthorization of the transportation system done, and that was done. And then we had a productive meeting with our senators Bennett and Udall for the breakfast meeting. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of really good information on some economic angles that we could work, as well as, again, you know, I think when we go back and learn what some other city staff do, sometimes in certain areas, our staff are way ahead of the curve, especially as the mayor mentioned, on the issue of how to deal with the new standards for wastewater treatment and nutrient standards, that sort of thing. But again, I think that got a lot of good presentations. And I encourage people to go next year because it is an experience to go there. And it's a much bigger picture of information than we could ever find for ourselves. And I think that that, to me, is always really important, to get a different perspective and get information that I necessarily wouldn't find, or staff can't go and do all this education in the level that we get it at the National League of Cities meeting. So, encourage you that the next meeting's in Boston, the one, the Congress of Cities, and be interested to see everybody go to that, too.
All right. Any questions from your council members? If not, we'll go to the comments from council members. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Witt and I had a great opportunity today. At about nine o'clock this morning, we got to visit Blue Mountain Elementary School. And they got to ask us all about being council members. We actually set up several, seven little mock council. We had a mayor. He actually wrote a proclamation, which was kind of cool. Councilmember Witt was nice enough to bring some ties and pearls and other jewelry for the ladies. And then of course, the question came, why aren't you wearing a tie? I don't wear ties, only on special occasions. But it was a lot of fun. How much do you make? How did you get elected? Do you work with the president? Do you work with the governor? How, you know, Councilmember Witt did a very good job explaining what we do with ordinances, overseeing public works, police and fire, streets, economic development, you name it. We ran the gamut and they were very excited. And I just got, we just got an email from their teacher, the lady that put it together, Sarah Harris. And it says, thank you for coming. The students really enjoyed you and your visit and what you, what we helped bring, helped them learn what they're learning in class. And it said, after you left, we did clarify that $1,000 for council members and $1,500 for a mayor isn't a lot of money. So, they were, they were, wow, that's a lot of money. Well, in a grander scheme, not so much. But as we kind of told them, we didn't, we're not in it for the money. We're in it for the, trying to help out our community. And, you know, it was a fun day, so I really enjoyed it. Katie, thank you very much, and that's all for me.
Councilmember Phelan?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. First of all, I'd like to officially welcome Harold to our, his first council. We're glad you're here. Of course, in tradition, I would like to talk about a business here in Longmont. I had the opportunity to try out a new restaurant called Comida Cantina. It's at 721 Confidence Drive in Prospect. The people who run it used to just have a food truck, and now they have a restaurant, and they call it Street Tacos. They're really, really good. So I would recommend you all go try Comida.
Councilmember Levison?
So I want to take the occasion, since this is a big holiday weekend, for a couple of religions to, you know, wish everybody a happy Passover and a happy Easter and however you celebrate these spring holidays, to wish you the best in our contemplation of all things spiritual. So, and hopefully we'll get good weather this weekend, too.
Okay, well, I just wanted to do a little shout-out for Platt River Power Association. I sit on that board, and they went through a really detailed, I guess it's a required audit, that where they bring in several auditors that come in site and they look at all of their operations. They also have auditors that are off-site that look at their finance. They basically, you know, look at all their processes, their procedures, and then they come in and they make sure that the people are actually following these procedures and they've got checkmarks and sign-offs. And it's a real detailed, you know, multiple-week audit, and they got a score of 0-0, which is the highest score. There was basically zero findings against them, any mistakes, and zero recommendations on how to improve their operation. And it's like an unheard of, it's like getting a perfect 10, you know, in some gymnastic event. So, I think we should all be really proud to have an organization like that, that we basically co-own with three other cities, so. And, so city manager, any comments?
Mayor, council, no formal comments. Just wanted to again say thank you for allowing me to serve the citizens of Longmont, and I look forward to working with everyone in the organization, citizens of our community, and mayor and city council as we try to move the city forward. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. We are adjourned.